This morning's meeting to order. And our first item is the approval of the agenda, and we do have one agenda addition, and that is the Clay County Remote Work Policy Approval. And I am going to try to fit that in somewhere between eight thirty-five and our break. I know Commissioner Gross has mentioned he has to leave at nine thirty for another commitment, and so we'll try to get that in before he goes.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Our next item is the citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard? I see none in the audience. Do we have any online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
All right, we will move on. Approval of bills, payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve the pay, bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from August third.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger and second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Next, we have a, we just want to give recognition to the Clay County Fair and Ag Association for a contribution to our sheriff's office in the amount of four hundred dollars. And, and that is for security and fair grown prep and setup. So, again, we like to recognize anytime we get those contributions and thank them for supporting our Clay County Sheriff's Office. All right, we'll go on to our eight thirty-five item, and that's a scheduled public hearing for determination of condemnation on county-state aid highway one. And this is Attorney Brian Meltin. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you might recall, from Attachment B, we did do a resolution back on April twenty-seventh. Dave Overbow and Justin Sorm are working on improvement of county-state aid highway one. We took that resolution as part of a condemnation practice. We adopted that back in April. I then moved forward with court. Also attached in your packet is the order from the court finding that the improvement of the highway is a necessity and a public project, which is the next step. That went actually pretty smooth. The Carl Goring, who's the individual who we're working on taking the right-of-way condemnation action against, didn't object and agreed that there was a necessity and the project is a necessity. The next issue then coming forward under the statute is to bring him here for the discussion on the issue of costs. And so, we would have a public hearing where Dave Overbow and Justin Sorm would present the project to you so you understand it, make sure you understand the actions that have been taken with the other landowners, the other nineteen landowners, the appraisal that's been put together and costs paid out to those other ones. Mr. Goring would have an opportunity then to address you and discuss with you what his position is and what he's looking at. The main thing, I mean, it's just like any other hearing or any other thing that you would do tax-wise or anything else, the only real difference is that you'll need to make written findings at the end. You'll, you'll take a regular vote as you would, but also require written findings. I'm here just to ask you to schedule the next hearing. As I put in the memorandum, I would be looking at, I think September seventh would be really the next board meeting. I'm, I'm not here on the twenty, well, there's a few things. One, there's a requirement of posting, so we'll post out on the bulletin board outside here of the, of the county, the board meeting room. We have to do that for ten days, as well as making sure that Mr. Goring has the notice of when the hearing is scheduled for. So with that ten-day notice, posting requirement, we just, we were gonna miss the twenty-third, and I actually also have another hearing on the twenty-third. I would like to be present just to make sure we cover everything, that we, I'll help you make ready the written findings, whatever your ultimate conclusions and findings are, so I would want to be present. So, September seventh would appear, just based on the pack. We don't have August thirty-first, fifth week one, so the seventh would be the next best one. So, and the only other thing I would say, again, as I think I've talked about before, we don't do a lot of condemnation actions. We haven't done one for about fifteen years. The last time we did do one, they had a, a public viewing of it, meaning we drove out there, looked at the project area, and then came back on that same day and then conducted the board meeting. So they went out like, say, seven fifteen in that morning to look at it. I think, well, that was fifteen years ago. I don't know that they had the exact same Google Earth and every other presentation. There's no requirement under the statute to do that. It's really up to you. And so I would just present that as well. If you want to have that, we would put that in the public notice that you'd all be meeting out to, to view that area, and then we'd come back here and, and conduct the, the meeting. But, no requirement to do that. It's not necessarily a necessity. I think they'll be able to show you a pretty good overview of it, but, again, that's up to you. So, it's really just here to, to set the meeting. I would recommend the September seventh at eight thirty-five, make it one of the first meetings, and then just make a decision whether you want to go out and see it.
Well, I was one of the, I was one there fifteen years ago when that happened.
Yeah.
And you're right, there was no technology like we have today, and I, you know, but obviously, I don't want to leave it up to the board. If they want to make a trip out there, then we can certainly make a trip out there. But, I think the, all the mapping and everything, it's pretty clear of what we'd be looking at, so. All right, we, do we have a motion to set the hearing, public hearing for September seventh, twenty twenty-one at eight thirty-five a.m.?
So move, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, we're sat, thank you. And you, so, the notices will be handled by-
I'll handle that, I'll get all that posted.
Excellent, thank you. All right, next we have the request for approval of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four for veteran service office operations.
Good morning.
Morning, morning, Mr. Chair, Board.
Can I just ask one thing? I thought, didn't last week when we did some resolutions, didn't we use thirty-four? I thought that we went from, well, maybe it was thirty to thirty-three.
Mr. Chair, we skipped after the meeting. Colleen, you'd mentioned that there was an issue that was going to be coming to the board that ended up getting adjusted to later in the month, and so we did have a gap.
Okay, okay. All right, I just want to make sure that it was, we weren't doubling up on that number. All right, Will.
All right, morning. Resolution, basically, nothing's changed in the process, nothing's changed in the paperwork, it's just the process has changed due to COVID. So, this resolution, we've done every year, I've just brought millions of paperwork to you, but the resolution authorizes me to enter into the agreement. I send that to the state, they send me the agreement to digi-sign over the internet. So, I did close out our last year's grant yesterday, so we, we managed to spend the entire grant. It's getting tougher without travel and training, so I'm hoping that picks up this year. So, for your reference, we do get twelve thousand five hundred from the state to, to spend in their, their requirements to spend every year. We usually use it for training, and this year we bought a copier and kind of updated equipment, so. We get that every year. Not everybody does the grant in different counties, but I'm surely doing it, so it helps out. That's what the resolution is. It's same as last year, just a different process, so.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by-
Which would make them, which would be the resolution, I should say.
Resolution, yeah. Resolution, yes. All right, any further, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Good to go.
Thank you.
By the way, good morning.
Yes, yes, it is a great morning.
All right, request to fill vacancy for full-time corrections officers. Justin.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
It's just like, we should just have a standing spot for you and-
It was a week off, so.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't here last week, so. But I did have another resignation, so I'm requesting to fill full-time correctional officer position. It's within our, our twenty twenty-one budget, and it's part of our DOC staffing plan to fill this position. There would be probably a slight cost savings in wages, and then I also believe it was a grandfathered position for the benefits, so there'd be a savings to the healthcare benefits and stuff like that as well.
All right. This one, there would be no backfill regarding this one, would there?
No.
Okay. Move to approve the hiring.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, maybe, since there are new members on this board, I know we received an email from Steve that talked a little bit about your population and staffing plan, and, and I think the three Commissioners that were on the board when we built the jail are kind of acutely aware of what that threshold is. Could you maybe just update the board?
So, as far as the need to, to house out of county, so because of our staffing levels, we've had to close some housing units to meet our DOC staffing plans, and in order to continue to meet those, those DOC staffing plans which are required, we have to reduce some population in, mainly one of our housing units. It's a combination of our minimum security males and our females need to equal forty or less to meet our staffing plans. The staffing ratio is one officer to forty inmates. Right now, we're, we're a little over that, so we need to reduce that housing unit space in order to continue to meet the staffing plan. As the board's aware, you know, over the last several months, we've lost several employees. It's been ten total full-time employees. We've now hired six. They're in the training process right now. We're still backgrounding a few more and have some more interviews scheduled. So we are in the process of, of getting our staffing back up to fully staffed and are making good strides in that. But in the meantime, we, we have to reduce that, that population in that area. We've avoided having to house out of county for the last several months by reclassifying people to other housing units. We're now to the point where if we reclassify to another housing unit, we're just gonna have to ship out of that housing unit. So, we've held off as long as we can. We're looking at, right now, having to house out about five inmates. Potential that, that could increase, but we are talking a very short window, just a matter of a month or two until we can get the six that are going through training right now, will be done with training by the end of September, barring any, any circumstances that would extend their training, which I don't foresee happening. So, we're still working to fill those remaining four positions, but in that meantime, we, we have to reduce the population this morning. It, it's hard to say our overall population, because it's more the population of that, those housing units, but this morning, our, our inmate population was one seventeen. May seem low for a facility that, that has the bed space that we have, but because of the staffing levels, we just have to reduce that.
I think it's really important for the public to know that, that, you know, when we promoted this thing, the need for this thing was because of our capacity issues before. And we, we sold this to the public, and the public agreed that we needed to build the facility and hence not have to ship people out anymore. And now here we are, having to send people out, but it's not because of capacity issues, it's because of workforce. And it's the same thing we're hearing over and over again in so many area, so many areas. And we gotta, we gotta see if we can figure out a solution to this. I don't know what we're, what we, you know, with Sheriff and you, I don't even know what the minimum requirements are to, for somebody to be a correctional officer. Maybe, maybe our pick committee should get a little presentation on that, so we can better understand, you know, what the requirements are, how we can recruit.
Currently, our, our minimum requirements are a high school diploma or equivalent. We do prefer some experience, but lately, that hasn't been the case, so that isn't a disqualification for the position. We're hiring people that are never intended to enter this line of work, but thought it would be an interesting line of work to enter, so we, we are seeing a different, different workforce coming into this line of work with these recent hires.
Who does, oh, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Who does the training for you? You guys do your own training?
So, our administrative sergeant, yeah, I mean, we do all in-house training. Our, our administrative sergeant does our initial three-day orientation, which is, our administrative sergeant still needs to be backfilled from promoting Carrie Tooten to Assistant Jail Administrator, so she is actually conducting that training right now, and then we assign them individually to FTOs on shift.
Justin, just so you know, too, I want to kind of reiterate what Commissioner Kaylee said here a couple weeks ago when you were here, is that we certainly understand that it's probably more of the, you know, it's the workforce issues than maybe the field, and it's, and it, it's not the management that's the issue here, so we just want to reassure you that, that we think you're doing a great job over there, and, and we'll see what we can do to have further discussions to try to make that better.
I appreciate that.
Because right now, the idea of us sending people out again becomes very costly, and we want to avoid that. So, Steve, did you-
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioners. That was maybe the avenue that I was going down. Could you maybe touch base a little bit, Justin, on the numbers that you're anticipating sending out, at least at this time, versus maybe some of the savings that you're, you've received by having the shortage of employees? Could you maybe touch base on that a little bit?
Yeah, so as of right now, we're talking five individuals housing out. If that runs, you know, it could be, it could be a month to three months, barring any, any new resignations or any changes in the individuals that we have hired. I think, I ran some quick numbers. The county that we're housing is, is gonna cut us a little bit of a deal. Housing rates have gone up in the last three years since we, we housed, but they're still gonna charge us the old rates of fifty-five dollars and, an inmate per day. And so, I think if we were to house out for, for three months at five individuals, I think it's right around that, twenty-five thousand dollars for that three months. I haven't run the numbers, but, you know, over the last several months, with our workflow or staffing shortage, we've more than saved those, those types of costs in our budget. I still anticipate us coming in at or under budget for the twenty twenty-one year, even with having to house these, these individuals out of county.
Well, I, I, yeah, Sheriff, if you want to come up too, but I, I do, I would like to, you know, Darren, maybe, maybe for a, a pick committee meeting coming up soon, we can have this on for an item of discussion. I think it's important that we try to figure out ways, Sheriff, that we can, and Justin, that we can help recruit. Did you have some comments on this?
And to add to that, I did, I did speak with our, our county administrator yesterday on some ideas that I had had to, you know, potentially help with that, but just to reiterate with Justin, as I said, this has kind of been a last, last resort for us. We've asked a lot of our current employees and our employees that are staying here yet. Kind of at the last minute, we adjusted their schedule on them, went from an eight-hour schedule to a twelve-hour schedule. Working twelve hours is obviously fairly difficult at times, and then when you ask them to do overtime, you're asking for some sixteen-to-eighteen hour days. So the employees that we do currently have right now are truly stepping up to the plate and doing everything they can to help us through this crunch, and we're also asking them to limit their vacation. So, are we not only asking them to work harder, but we're also asking them to not take days off as well. So we have to be thankful for the ones that are still over there right now and just truly appreciate their work and their service.
Well, you make sure you thank them from us too, for, for the work that they're doing, and I'd hate to see them just get, you know, overloaded and-
Yep.
End up having more people resign for that reason, so.
That's why we're really doing the push here, to get these people hired on. We've got somebody on light duty that's just been working through the backgrounds and making things go a little bit quicker for us.
Well, if you'd be okay with it, I, I, our pick committee, I think, I'd be interested in hearing what some of your ideas are too, and so Darren will schedule you if that's okay with you guys to come.
Absolutely.
We could talk about, all right. All right, any, I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Mojo. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Request for approval of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five for authorization, authorization of capital assistance program grant for resource recovery facility. Shannon, you're filling in for Kirk today.
I am, good morning. I'm here to ask you to approve Resolution twenty-one thirty-five. It's regarding state grant funding for the resource recovery campus. We're already under construction. Much of the earthwork is done. We are spending our local match money currently. We need to get the grant agreement signed so that we can use the state matching money. I did meet with the MPCA and Burns and McDonald after the groundbreaking ceremony, and we, we identified six items that we need to have in and to get our grant agreement signed. This is the third of those, so we're, we're working down that list. After this, we will need our closing, closing memorandum from the bond, bonding, and then it's up to the MPCA to review the documents, and then they will draft the agreement. So we're, we're getting to the end of this process. This resolution has the seven required elements from the MPCA in it. They require that we will implement the project, we will provide funding for the project, we'll develop and operate the project, we'll only use the grant funding funds for this project, and we will pay any construction costs that come in over, over the estimate, and we won't withdraw funding from the project. The last thing that the grant agree, or that this, sorry, this memory, resolution does is authorize the board chair to sign when we do get that grant agreement, authorizes him to sign it.
Did this language come from MPCA?
It did.
It's probably one of the most confusing languages I've ever read, but I guess it does the trick.
It did, there were, they, I asked for language because it was a little convoluted, but we got there.
Brian, do you see this as okay from? All right. Well, it's something that's needed, and maybe offline, you can, we can talk a little bit about the three remaining things that need to be done.
And they're, yep.
Because we want to get that, get those things finished.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-five. Second.
We have a motion on Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, Shannon, thank you. All right, next, we have a request of, for, to fill vacancies for juvenile worker and case manager in the secure unit. Good morning, James.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to request permission to fill two positions in our secure unit. One is a case manager position, the other one is a juvenile worker position. With the case manager position, I would request permission to backfill in the event that that's filled internally. The case manager position is, is quite a heavy hitter position, is a hard one to lose her, but circumstances drove her to another city, so. With that, does anybody have any questions?
I'll move to approve both these positions and authorize a backfill.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Comments, Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, once again, as we've just discussed with the, the correctional officers, this is something we hear all over the state, and these are difficult positions, and I don't want to underestimate the need to hire employees who can pass a background, and that narrows your pool even further, in addition to workforce issues we're looking at and having to compete with, with private industry for, for really coveted employees, so. This is a tough thing in, in law enforcement, in corrections, and in juvenile case. We're seeing it in dispatch centers all over the state, too. We have dispatch centers that can't staff their, their shifts, and we just recently saw a news article on a neighboring community that is trying to hire more people, can't find them across the river from them. Richland County in North Dakota is in the same, the same boat. So this is something that hopefully, as the workforce gets back to steam, we're not gonna see, but we understand it's certainly not management, but it's just the nature of the employment market right now.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, James, we'll go right into your budget presentation.
All right, so I have two budgets to present, budget proposals. One is for our secure portion, one is for our non-secure portion. Our secure portion, for a little bit more background, is comprised by eleven member counties, with ultimate authority laying with this board. Ten counties in west central Minnesota, the Cass County, North Dakota, all share that budget. With, what I'm proposing in twenty twenty-two is for, well, I'll go back, how that is split up, how all the cost responsibility is split up between the counties is dependent upon a two-year look-back usage, so it's all based on usage. So if you'll see, I'm going to be requesting from Clay County about nine percent less than I did last year, and that's based on a combination between Clay County's usage, member county's usage, and non-members' usage. Taking an overall look at this budget, the secure one, you'll see at the bottom, it looks like we're scheduled, I'm budgeting to be one point two million dollars short, but that's because we're going to have a credit of one point two million from the revenues over expenditures from twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty. So, kind of going through that, I'm budgeting to, for about ten non-member a year, that's a little over a million dollars. We've been averaging about fifteen, but again, that's, that's, that can change very quickly, so I don't want to get too far out in front of that. Miscellaneous reimbursement, miscellaneous revenue, those, those are starting to jump up a little bit, but that's cost in, cost out, so if we have to pay for a therapist, a doctor, et cetera, like in our other professional services or medical consultant, the counties who use that service pay us back for that, so that's really all that is. You're gonna see a lot of percentage jump change, you know, twenty percent here, up twenty, down twenty. That's moving into the new facility and getting used to the population change, the, the needs. So, does anybody have any specific questions?
Any questions? Well, they, so the, the only, I'll just make the comment, that one point two million, that was the full amount of revenues over expenditures for, for twenty twenty. In the past, we have not, we have not felt comfortable with crediting the entire amount, you know, we, because we'd like to try to keep a little bit in reserve, but the fact of the matter is, is we're- to keep a little bit in reserve, but the fact of the matter is, is we're seeing some of the same numbers applying to 2021. So we feel confident that, you know, James's budget's going to see some revenues over expenditures in 2021, too. So the 22 budget, we were able to use that entire $1.2 million, and it's a good thing, and it's a credit to you and your staff and your group there. Boy, Steve, remember when we didn't have that option whatsoever, and the fact that we've expanded to allow for that room? So kudos to you guys for a job well done.
And to go off that expansion piece, too, that was very critical timing. There's been closures across the state, and we've been able to provide services for Clay County youth and some other youth in a time right now with Cambie Hills closing, the Hills organization itself closing, psychiatric residential treatment facilities closing. There aren't many facilities left, and for us to be able to have that expansion, to be able to take care of our youth and do what's right, has been very beneficial to us, and we're very thankful for that. So I'll move into the non-secure budget, if that's okay?
Yes, please do.
Non-secure budget, this one's ran strictly by Clay County, but we do take other member, no, other counties, sorry. I broke it down into two different things. I got a letter from the grant for $126,000 again, for two years. That's 126 a year. The money hasn't came in yet, but we got the letter saying that we're going to be approved for it. So I put that in the new request line. So this, the proposed budget would be like a worst-case scenario. The new request line would be if we got that grant, which I'm almost certain we will, and that will provide that. Basically, again, there's some movement around in, that's just the expansion of the staffing needs. Again, it's going to depend on what social services needs. It's very difficult right now to pinpoint exactly what services are going to be required, given that facilities continue to close, there's needs change and they shift so frequently that right now, I have a meeting with Rhonda and her team to figure out what that's going to look like, as no other facilities around the area and state are going to be able to help us out much for some very high needs, very complex cases. So that's kind of mostly that in a nutshell. Does anybody got any questions about the grant or any specific line item?
Questions? Steve?
Mr. Chair, maybe if I could, maybe just give a little bit of background, James, on, for our new commissioners, that the grant positions originally were part of your original staffing plan, correct, with the expansion?
It was, yep.
And so the ability, now you applied for the, received a two-year grant, which essentially has been able to offset our levy function, and then you were, you received that grant again.
Yep.
And that's a two-year?
That's a two-year. So it'll be in 2022 and 2023, we'll get $126,000 each year for those positions that will, again, just drive the cost down.
And so I think for our new commissioners, it's just important to understand that from an impact standpoint, these positions are part of, part of James's staffing plan, that because he successfully applied in two occasions for that, it's been able to offset. But these positions weren't in addition to his needs, and so at the end, if, in two years, if he doesn't get that, that will be something that will be reflective in our levy.
All right.
Kevin?
Yes, Commissioner Kaylee.
So you mentioned, like, with the closure of Cambria and these other residential psychiatric treatment facilities for youth, that you've been able to take some of those cases. Is that correct?
Yep.
Has that changed how you're staffing at all? Are there, did you have to add additional?
Most definitely, yep. Lot of one-on-one staff, lot of high needs, complex issues that require a lot of one-on-one care. Ideally, it'd be best if there was a doctor, but there is not a doctor, and we do have the ability to get those folks in those professional services with those other professional services and stuff. We're able to get that care, so we're able to do that based on your guys' approving.
Well, thank you so much for taking these kids. I've known a few in my life that have needed that level of care, and they're still precious children, so thank you so much.
James, I was at a Lakes Country Service Co-op meeting last week, and I understand you had a staff member there that took a tour of our facility, and she made a point to come up to me after our meeting and gave high praise for your facility, including the area that's kind of new where we have, for the older kids, where there's the...
Eclipse.
Yeah, that's an excellent, she felt that was an excellent program, and she was also asking in what, in any way, Lakes Country Service Cooperative could do to help your facility anyway. So that's something to keep in mind, and I think she might be reaching out to you some more moving forward.
Thank you, that's much appreciated.
Yeah, you bet. All right. Anything else? I think you've kind of covered your budget. Any other questions? Thank you, James.
Thank you.
All right. Now, at this point, we have some time, and I would like to, I would like to bring up our agenda addition, and that's Clay County Remote Work Policy Approval. Yesterday, we had a carers meeting, and I had an opportunity to talk with Darren, and I asked if there would have been any additional comments from any of the commissioners, and seeing has there, had not been any other than the one, the one comment that Commissioner Mojo asked about in terms of review, and the most recent copy has included that modification to the policy. And so I just felt, originally, we were going to have another pick committee meeting after today's meeting and come back next week and, you know, talk about implementing this process, and I just felt that if there's no other changes, we could probably save ourselves a week by moving forward with this policy. And at the same time, we have, we have other COVID issues coming up, so this might just be a beneficial time to be getting this started. So Darren, you can, I just kind of give a little brief background...
Well, you kind of took my whole thunder, so that's okay.
Okay, well.
Since it's such a perfect policy, there was no comments.
For the public's information, we had several versions of this.
We did. I think this is version eight, so we worked on this quite a bit to get it the way we wanted it. But as you recall, last week, I gave a presentation on the remote work policy, and as Commissioner Campbell said, that the, things were changed within the policy based on Commissioner Mojo's comments. The only item that we changed on this was item number 10. It's on page three, and we basically allowed the supervisor to counsel if they were having problems with an employee that is on a remote work, that they would be able to counsel them at any time. There was some discussion on a 90-day and everything, and some of the feedback that I got was, we didn't want to put in an official evaluation at 90 days, just because we're now putting more responsibilities on the supervisors at a 90-day, six-month, one-year. And so, but we did change that language, though, so that it does give them the ability to address any problems that come up during that. So other than that, the policy would stay as presented last week, and what I'm looking for today is approval of that policy. If it's approved today by the board, then I will try to get everything posted online and make sure all the links are good and ready to go, so.
I guess my feeling on this is that, you know, we've gone through it all. I certainly support the policy, and I would, I would suggest that if somebody makes a motion to approve the policy, that we have it effective immediately. And by that, it still is going to require supervisors their time to, it's not like they're going to start this thing tomorrow, because they've got to go through some, through that process, right?
Yep, exactly. They have to go on and meet with their supervisor, their employees that want to remote work, go through and set up the conditions of remote work for those employees. So it's not, like you said, it's not going to start tomorrow. We're not going to see a mass...
But when they're ready.
But when they're ready.
From our standpoint...
Correct.
If, you know, if it's approved here today, that would be the intent.
Correct.
Do we have any, any further discussion amongst the board here? What's the, I mean, we have a, I don't, personally, I don't see any reason why we should wait. And, you know, you've determined, you know, through this process, those positions that qualify.
Correct.
We already know, we already know those...
Correct.
Those positions, yeah. Okay. Commissioner Ebbinghaus?
I'd like to move to approve this Clay County Remote Work Policy and make it effective immediately.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebbinghaus, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gross?
You know, I was always a bit leery in this policy and knowing it, but I'm going to support it, you know, but this is a big step for the county to go do this, that we're going to start working from home. It's not just some piece of paper here that we're going to, here, okay, here's a new thing here. It's just, it's going to take a lot of supervision, I think, and we're really going to have to watch this closely as far as the people that are out there working from home. And the people that are, the units that are doing it are units that are pretty big staffed, you know, normally have 100, 200 people. And that's a lot of people to supervise, and to keep track of all those is going to be an important job. And just to make supervisors aware, this is a big responsibility we're taking on. This is not just sort of a, oh, we get to work from home type thing, you know, it's, this is a big step for the county to take on and approve, and I'll support it, and I hope it works for this county.
Well, those are comments well taken, and, you know, I think the other side to that is, and I've said it before, I've done a 180 on this from years ago when this was presented, and it goes to what's happened this past year and a half. Our employees have proven that they can work from home and still accomplish everything that's needed for our citizens, based on the position.
Right.
You know, so, and, and again, we, we have to understand the importance of, we're talking about it at every meeting, recruiting.
Right.
And this is, this is a recruiting tool as well, so it's the, it's the new way of workforce, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, having, a lot of these positions that we're talking about are the ones that have already had remote work for the last year and a half, so it's not something that we're throwing on, and it's a brand-new thing. I think this just gives us a little bit more structure to manage it better than maybe what we did in the last year and a half, and something that we can point to now to say, you have to do this, or this isn't being done, or whatever. I think it gives the supervisors a little bit more leverage to do that thing. But I, I understand Commissioner Gross's concerns, because there was a lot of discussion on that stuff of, you know, how are we going to manage that? And if it makes it, if it matters, you know, I think we only, out of the whole year and a half, I can only remember probably one or two people that we had to bring back because it wasn't working out for the remote work, and out of, you know, how many that actually did remote work during the COVID experience, so. We hope it works.
I think it'll work out. I mean, it's just going to take a lot of supervision. I mean, I hope that some people aren't applying for this. Well, I could really save some money on daycare. I can, you know, I won't have to drive 20, 30 miles every day, or whatever the case may be, you know, it's just, I hope it's being done for the right purpose, to save some workspace here, and in some cases, just for, you can do your job better sometimes from home.
Yep, and like with any brand-new policy, you know, there may be some tweaks here and there down the road as we, you know, get into it a little bit further and find out that maybe we forgot something or whatever, so we can always go back and correct that if we have to.
So in a lot of this, it's, you know, it's kind of, it's in the hands of the departments, and one thing that's in this policy is it can be rescinded at any time, too, so it's...
Correct.
It's, let's hope that never has to happen, but I've got confidence. And by the way, just as a side note, we as commissioners do a lot of work from home for our jobs. We're not, it's just not when we're here. We do a lot of work on behalf of the county when we're at home, too, so it's...
We'll have you sign the policy then.
Yeah. I'll check in with my supervisor.
He tries to manage you, but I don't know if he does or not.
Do we have any, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. That workforce policy has been approved unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a short break here. Wait, no, no, I'm going to, I'm going to, let's get Kathy up here, because give Frank a chance to, and then we'll take a break after that. COVID-19 update. We'll do your, we'll do your budget stuff after the break, but I just, Commissioner Gross has to leave at 9:30, so I'd give us an opportunity for him to...
Can you have a PowerPoint?
All right.
Okay, I'll introduce my team. I have Jamie here, as usual, providing the update, and we also included Becky. She works mostly in our environmental health services, but she has an epidemiology background, infectious disease background, so this is right up her alley. So we included her as well, as our, one of our local resources. So we did provide a PowerPoint, so the public can actually see that, hopefully. So Jamie will start us off with our presentation.
Yeah, can we, yeah, can you...
Thank you. Where's my IT? Darren?
This'll cost you extra.
Probably one button, Kathy.
It's probably one button. Thank you, Darren. Do you want to sit up here?
All right, well, good morning, Jamie. Do you want to...
Good morning. We'll start with the data. So basically, just looking at, currently, Clay County has 78 active cases, and this is an increase from 11, which was July 6th. And then Clay County has seen this level continue to rise since May. So Becky puts the data together for us that we share with you, but that just sharing on this slide, that we are up from July 6th to 78 now. Minnesota has seen an increase in that timeframe and is currently at 9,044. And then Becky also has the data for you for Cass County to compare that. So July 6th, Cass County was sitting at 15 cases, active cases, and currently, as of the 16th, they have 243 cases. And then looking at the total for North Dakota on that slide as well. So our local hospitals are seeing an increase in cases, and admissions are steadily increasing. And then also, just wanted to let you know that Clay County Public Health continues to provide vaccine opportunities and have been responding to requests from the universities, the K-12 schools, and businesses as they have come up, so. Then I'll go to the next slide. And this slide, we have the Clay County cases per... And this slide, we have the Clay County cases per week. And so you can see how they have been steadily increasing. And then this week, as of through 8/8, we had 52 cases, but the data showed that we were at 78 as of the 16th. And then we'll go to the next slide. And then again, this, we have the breakdown of the active cases by age. And so you can see that we're seeing a little bit of an increase in cases for the children. And we've had some little daycare cases that have popped up, some positives in the childcare. If you think about it, those are the children that have not been vaccinated as of yet. But our highest number continues to be in that 25 to 29, which is what we've seen over time, so.
Jamie, and maybe you're going to get to this, but on the active cases, do we know how many of them have, are active cases that have had vaccine versus not had vaccine?
And Becky's going to talk to us a little bit as we get to that.
Okay, so we're going to get some of that information.
She's going to talk about breakthrough cases, and she'll also talk about the Delta variant when we get to that point.
Okay, good, okay. As long as it's coming up, that's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then the next slide, we'll look at the total doses administered by Clay County Public Health. And you can see, you know, that we had a very slow period of time, and now things have started to increase. So this goes through 8/8, and it was 133 vaccines that we're providing. Last week, we had an opportunity for Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson, and we were pretty busy. There were people in the hallway at the Family Service Center, so we were happy to see that people are taking advantage of that $100 that would be available for vaccine. And also, the fact that there's information in there, in the news, about the increase in cases. So we did see an increase, and we also have a clinic planned this week on Thursday, and that one will be from 2:00 to 6:00. So we're still continuing to provide vaccines.
Is that at the Family Service Center, too?
Family Service Center. Okay, and then we'll go to the next slide. And so this is just, we put this in to show, we've had some opportunities to work with MSUM and serving the public and also their staff and the students as they've come in. So this one was on a Sunday, and we had a fairly decent response. It wasn't a lot of people on campus yet, but we were there again last week, and then we also are planning to be there on Saturday, the 21st, for vaccines there. We've got some plans with M State, we've reached out to Concordia, we were at Morehead School, K-12 School yesterday, and we've been in the DGF School. So just to let you know, we're out there wherever we can provide vaccine. Okay, the next slide, we're just sharing with you the statewide data. And so statewide for Minnesota, we're still, you know, right under 70s, so 68.9 for the number of individuals that have had at least one vaccine. And then for 64.6 for those that have completed the vaccine series. And then we have the breakdown by the age group for you as well. So the data, I believe, is the 16, that top one, the number of one vaccine is 16 and greater, right, Becky? Right, okay, so that's where we're at for the 16 and up. And as we've seen all along, our highest response to the vaccine has been in that 65 and over. Okay?
And just so you know, the, you know, the Clay County, we've talked about this every week almost, that our data isn't accurate because we couldn't get the North Dakota pharmacies information. That went directly to the federal agencies, and we also couldn't get VA information. They weren't in part of our immunization registry in Minnesota. So we know it was inaccurate. Minnesota Department of Health knew it was inaccurate, so we hesitate to, you know, it's, it looks like.
Our numbers are higher, then.
Yeah, and we, we're convinced, as well as MDH, that we're closer to the state rate. So that's why we've just put the statewide data on there. Okay, and then I'll talk about the level of community transmission. So you can see from the left depiction of Minnesota through the period of July 26th to August 1st, you know, there's a lot of yellow, and yellow is moderate transmission. There's even some blue, which is low transmission. So, you know, in that period of time, you know, there was just a little bit of areas that were in red. Now you see, starting August 8th, and this is through the 14th, you know, there's no blue anymore across the state. There's limited numbers of areas that are still in yellow. Low again is, or blue is low transmission, yellow is moderate transmission, orange is substantial. So Clay County is still in the substantial rate. And then the high is the highest level that CDC has, and that's the high level of transmission. And so the indicators are, it's the number of total cases per 100,000 in a seven-day period, as well as a percentage in the seven-day period. So we were in moderate just a week ago, a little over a week ago. So quickly changed to substantial. We don't really have a scientific prediction about when we may get into the high transmission. It's most likely inevitable that we'll hit high transmission with the numbers rising. Cass County and North Dakota is at that level. So there's communities around us as well. Otter Tail is in the high transmission. Becker is still in substantial, and Wilken County is in substantial. Douglas County, I believe, is in high as well. So, you know, there's a number of counties around us that are at least substantial or high transmission. And then I'll let Becky talk about the Delta variant.
I'm sure by now everyone has heard at least a little bit about the Delta variant. It's all across the news and it's kind of the hot topic right now. And as we continue to learn more.
Excuse me, Kathy, I'm wondering if we can get a little more introduction of her and for the public, and she has an epidemiology background?
Correct.
And what is that? For the public?
Yeah, and so I'll let, you know, and Becky was, you know, she's hired to do food pool and lodging, all the environmental health services, along with Kent. But the beauty of having Becky is she has that infectious disease background, and Becky can talk a minute about that, and epidemiology background. And Becky also served throughout COVID with our contact tracing case investigators. She would serve as a lead in training our variable hour people that we hired into that area. So Becky can talk about her epidemiology background?
So I have a bachelor's in microbiology, and then I have a master's of public health and management of infectious disease. So basically infectious disease epidemiology.
Is your business.
Yeah, that's my real passion.
Your love.
Environmental health is the.
Secondary.
So, yeah, throughout the course of the pandemic, I had.
So you'd probably know more about it than I would. Right?
I would, you know, I don't know.
Okay. I'm trying to make a few points here.
So as Kathy stated, I did, I started the case investigation and contact tracing team here at the county last, or was that, May 2020, over a year ago. I don't know where the time has gone. And then also have served other roles as well, public information and doing the data every week, so.
And she does know, Jamie and I are nurses, so Becky knows a lot more about the infectious disease than we do, so we can acknowledge that.
Well, I also understand you two both know a lot more than I do about. All right, you can.
Okay, so I'm sure everyone's heard of the Delta variant. It's, like I said, a hot topic right now. We're still continuing to learn more about it, as unfortunately, it's spreading rapidly across the country. Even here in Minnesota, as you can see, it's thought to cause at least 95% of the current cases that we're seeing. And Clay County, unfortunately, is no exception. We are seeing the variant here now as well. It is driving the current surge that we're seeing nationwide. The Delta variant is thought to be more than two times more infectious as the original SARS-CoV-2 strain was. And that's the strain, you know, the original one that we saw early on in the pandemic. So as you can see in this graphic, you know, on average, an infected person would infect two other vulnerable people that they were in close contact with. With the Delta variant, we're seeing that one infected person can infect up to five people that they're in close contact with. So much, much more infectious. And because of that, we're really seeing exponential growth of cases throughout the U.S. And there's a lot of reasons for that. One of the biological reasons is that this variant is much better at attaching to our cells and gaining entry. So it doesn't require as many viral particles to be circulating in the air to infect somebody. So, as I said, there's more. I'm sure we'll learn more as time goes on with that as well.
And that's been, that's been determined by research.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so it's also more efficient at infecting younger people, which we're seeing. You know, early on in the pandemic, we wouldn't see very many young children that would become infected, even in households where, you know, let's say mom and dad were infected, we wouldn't, we wouldn't see the children picking that up, or in daycare settings or school settings. So now, you know, with our case investigation calls, we're seeing, we're interviewing whole families, we're interviewing kids at daycare centers where the provider was infected. And so it's definitely has been a change in these last several weeks. That being said, the unvaccinated group is by far at the greatest risk, so we urge everybody to get the vaccine if they have not done so yet. We can go to the next slide. So we have seen some breakthrough cases, and this is statewide data here. It's hard to get local data, there's, for a multitude of reasons, but there is a lag in reporting, because as we interview a positive case, the State Health Department has a separate interview process for those that have been vaccinated, and then we have to verify that they have actually been vaccinated, and that they've been fully vaccinated, which is 14 days after their last dose of vaccine. But you can see, looking at these numbers here, the rate is about 0.24% of breakthrough cases. So out of the number of people that have been vaccinated in Minnesota, it's a very, very small proportion of people that wind up becoming infected. And then really negligible hospitalizations and deaths, almost not even reported.
99.76% of the people that are vaccinated.
Right, right.
Are okay.
Yeah, those numbers are hard to dispute, and, you know, the main message is that, yes, you may wind up becoming infected with COVID, just because it's rampant right now in our community. The community transmission is so high, but it's keeping people out of the hospital. And even this number is over-reported, the 0.02%, so that also includes people that are admitted for another procedure, and they're not having COVID symptoms, but they're required to be tested. And so they wind up testing positive, but they're actually in the hospital for another procedure. So that number is included in the 0.02%. So a little caveat to looking at those numbers. So, again, main message, if you have not gotten the vaccine, now is the time to do that.
Just a question on these numbers. They are actual verified cases, we're not projecting into the general population.
Correct, yep.
For people who may be light or asymptomatic, so we can conclude that possibly these are higher.
Correct, yep.
In the real world.
Yep, yep. And likely, yeah, it may not include those that are asymptomatic that aren't being tested.
But again, if you're vaccinated and you get COVID, there's a high chance it's going to be lower asymptomatic as opposed to.
And we're seeing that trend across the country, too. You know, the southern states right now particularly are hit very hard with hospitalizations, and 99% of the people that are hospitalized are the unvaccinated. So it's really become a pandemic of the unvaccinated.
Just, oh, go ahead.
I had just a couple of questions in terms of the Delta variant. Whether it's, any of you three want to answer it? But are we seeing, is there any difference in the three types of vaccines and the Delta variant? Is there any difference? Is there any scientific knowledge? For example, there might, you know, there's some people that say, well, the Johnson &amp; Johnson doesn't stand up the Delta. Is there anything scientific about that?
I think the jury is still out on that. I have not seen any studies. I know there's a lot of anecdotal stories out there.
Right, well, there, yeah.
But I have not seen anything scientific to back.
Okay, so, so there's no public scientific data that would suggest one works better than another?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of at this point in time.
Again, I'm asking these questions because I'm being asked to ask it by others, so. And then Kathy or Jamie? The August 16th number of 78, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but how does that compare with our previous high peak of active cases?
We brought that. It's the question.
You anticipate that?
Thanks for sending me that message. We were, we were pretty high with our active cases. I'll just, back in April, we had, we had a lot of high.
Our previous high, April 4th, was 230 cases. Our all-time high was November 8th or 11th, I can't read that.
Actually, April 13th, we had 319 cases. So that was a pretty high number.
665 in November.
Yeah, and November was another peak, yep. So in April, we had a number of, every week, we had a number of cases close to the 200 to 300.
We had, at one point, we had an all-time high in the 600 and some number.
Correct, yep.
Are you, is that total cases or new cases that week? What is the number that you're talking about right now?
Weekly.
New reported cases, okay.
Active cases.
So, yeah, those numbers were quite high in those two areas, the two months that we really had the high peaks.
So, I mean, the numbers as they're rising is alarming, but it's still, I mean, it's also, I mean, COVID was running rampant then, too, but it's also showing the significance of vaccination. Our number, otherwise, you know, we could be seeing numbers in that 600 range again, so that's, I guess that's my point I'm trying to make.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
But our testing rates are also significantly lower than they were at that point in time, too, correct? Would you know what our testing rates are now?
You know what, and I apologize, I didn't bring that.
Sorry, we're asking so many questions.
We do, we get our weekly, I forgot to bring that, I apologize. We're still doing weekly testing, of course, in our saliva testing site, which will remain open through the end of the year. So we verified that yesterday, so that's good news. But people can also go over to Fargo, they have a testing site. So, you know, we wouldn't know the numbers of what that may be at the Fargo site. So, but Minnesota or the Morehead testing site, we're seeing numbers go up with testing. So it was a lull for a little while, and now we're seeing more people getting tested again.
So I know back last year when this was peaking, that there were a lot of employers that were requiring their employees to go and get tested weekly. And is, do we know if that's still happening for teachers or daycare providers, things like that? So is that potentially affecting our numbers because there are less asymptomatic people getting tested on a regular basis?
So, so what we do know is that long-term care and assisted livings continue to test based on what their cases are, you know. We also know that now the Minnesota Department of Health is recommending that if you've been exposed to a positive case, even if you've been vaccinated, that you get tested. And so the fact that those two things are happening, we will see an increase in the number of people that are being tested. So, right, you know, for a period of time there, we were told that if we were vaccinated, we had symptoms, we didn't need to be tested, we just needed to stay home. But now the recommendation is that we be tested because we know there's more virus in the community now as well. So as far as the schools go, you know, I'm not sure where that is, as they're planning to open up school. But they, the recommendation from the Minnesota Department of Health, if you are, you know, in a large group setting with unvaccinated people, that you be tested. So there's more, more stress of getting tested. So we're appreciative of the fact that we still have the saliva testing site in our community.
Yeah, and, you know, an important thing, though, too, is there's still the positivity rate.
Yes, exactly.
You know, that happened in November when we had 600 and some, and there is a positivity rate today. And I, you know, so based on the numbers, you still have a certain percentage of those tested, test positive, and that becomes your positive rate.
Exactly.
And, you know, so that's something, I think it's probably, I would imagine that's important for you folks to watch, right?
Yes, correct.
For our school districts to watch.
Correct.
And what those positivity rates are.
Absolutely.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Ebbinger.
Are we still actively doing contact tracing? Good.
We are talking about bringing more onboard, too, as we're anticipating our numbers to continue to increase.
I think it's important we keep up with that and whatever we need to do to facilitate that, I think. Feel free to ask or let us know.
Okay, yeah, I think it's important to keep it up as well, and we lost a few people that kind of were with us from the beginning, based on their jobs and other things, so. So some of the counties around us stopped doing contact tracing, but we've been able to keep up with it. So I think it's important to have that local contact. I think that's really beneficial.
Going to Commissioner Evinger's comment too, it is, I agree, it's really important to do that. And I think you're going to have to keep us, in the past, that contact tracing we're able to use out of the previous CARES dollars too. And you had some, you actually had some extra state funding that did that. I don't know if you have that or not, but you need to make sure that you keep us informed there so that, we don't want to let that slide.
Okay.
Right?
Thanks, yes, we'll do that.
If it becomes a budgetary deal, then our CARES 2 should hear about it.
Okay, perfect. Also, just to note, the infectious disease doctors across America are saying, you know, that they were toting the 70% herd immunity, that was really important. Now with the Delta variant, they say we need to ramp that up. Needs to be a higher herd immunity to really keep people safe. So as Becky mentioned, and Jamie too, is we just really, really encourage the unvaccinated to get vaccinated. That will really help in the herd immunity. So that's a real priority. We talk about masks and that's.
Just before you go to the masks, can I ask one other question? And I do try to follow this from a national level too whenever I get a chance. And obviously, there's a lot of concern about very young children now. We're starting to see some changes in the Delta variant and kids becoming sicker. What's the latest on vaccine potential? I think I heard something about maybe children five to 12 might be coming in the near future. Have you heard any more internally on that?
Becky, you heard any more, they're working on a vaccine. The American Academy of Pediatricians are really pushing to, you know, move that along to, so we can get those younger kids vaccinated.
These are doctors.
Correct, these are doctors. And they're really strongly recommending that we do need to get, you know, trying to push it along, not beyond safety measures. They'll continue to have the safety measures, but they really want that to ramp up as quickly as they can, giving them all the resources so we can get that vaccine for the younger kids. Now, I haven't heard from MDH when that potentially will be. Becky, have you heard anything?
I've heard a few different timelines thrown out there, but.
Nothing you're, okay.
I think credible.
Okay, other than hopefully it's sooner rather than later.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a follow-up with that. You mentioned that the incidence of diseases is higher in kids. Can you talk about what kinds of symptoms and how severe it has been? You know, is it just still a mild cold? Or what are we seeing with kids that are infected with Delta?
What I've seen typically, you know, largely kids are not as affected severely as older adults. You know, they're just kind of more the cold symptoms, the headache, the sore throat, the fever, feeling lethargic, things like that.
High temperature?
Fever, yep, fever, I've seen that, yep.
Anything beyond that or?
Not that I've dealt with personally, I guess, but.
So for young parents with young kids that might be watching this, what would be indicators, as Commissioner Kaylee was talking about, where they should take action and bring them in? What would be your suggestion there?
Well, I think anytime a parent has a concern.
Of course, yeah.
If they've been exposed to someone with COVID and they're having some of these classic COVID symptoms, definitely reaching out to your medical provider and seeing if they want to be tested. I guess my, you know, I have five young children too, and when in doubt, bring them in if you're concerned.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, masks.
Masks.
Great subject.
Oh, great subject. And we just wanted to, you know, provide information about what Minnesota Department of Health, Center for Disease Control, and our local health systems, and what they're doing as far as recommendations. So all of those are recommending wearing masks in indoor public settings, in areas where there's substantial and high, I talked about the levels of transmission that the CDC put out. So this is the recommendation from those organizations that we partner with all the time. Now, I did reach out to Cass County in North Dakota, their public health department, their city, they're under the city, and their city has not determined that they're going to recommend or require masks at this time. They're in the high level of transmission. Their public health department is in their own separate building. So their public health department is having their visitors mask when they come in, irregardless of their vaccine status. And they, as employees, are masking as well. But there's no other city requirement for city employees, that's in Cass County. I reached out to our regional other counties. Becker County is not, at this point, making a change in their recommendation for masks. They are, they did the same thing as we did, where we offered masks and recommended masks for those visitors that come in that were not vaccinated. We also recommended masks for those employees that weren't vaccinated. So Becker County is still, they haven't changed that, their criteria. Otter Tail is still working. Now, Otter Tail is in red again, the high transmission. Otter Tail is, they haven't made a determination yet, their board has not. They're going to be discussing it further about what their recommendation would be. So they have not made a recommendation beyond what I just talked about with the original recommendations, nor has Wilkin County. So our surrounding counties are still talking through masking. So just so you have kind of a sense of what's happening around us as well.
Anything else to add to my team?
Kathy, are you offering a vaccination clinic at the Morehead High School today? Did I see?
The Morehead High School was yesterday. And they might have another one set up.
My knowledge. They did yesterday.
Well, I know Commissioner Campbell and I had met yesterday as part of the American Rescue Committee, and you were part of that. And there are still groups out there that have people amongst them that want to get vaccinated and have, for whatever reason, had to issue finding availability. And I know that your department has been open and willing to go into groups or to places of worship or community centers and host vaccination clinics. So for anyone watching, that availability is still out there and that offer is there. And so to contact the public health department and you can coordinate it with them, so thank you.
Perfect, you. We also told, thanks for that, we told the schools as well and higher ed, we'll vaccinate parents. We're coming to their location, not just for the students, but we're offering it to teachers, we're offering it to parents. Anyone can come to those sites as well, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So this is, the recommendation that you shared here doesn't say whether or not vaccinated or unvaccinated people should be wearing masks, that's not called out. But in a post that Clay County Public Health shared yesterday, which was from the CDC, it was a share from the CDC post on, I think it was the 16th. They're saying that, the quote is, "Wear a mask indoors in public if you are in an area of substantial or high transmission, even if you are fully vaccinated."
Correct.
So with that in mind, and with what you said earlier about it's inevitable, when we will go to high, it's going to happen, it's just a matter of when. I would like to see us institute a mask mandate for county buildings. I think we can be a leader for our surrounding counties in making the choice for safety and protecting human lives. There's science and math and good common sense behind mask wearing. And so I don't, I don't know if you want to do that this week since Frank is not here, if you would like the full board to be a part of that decision. But that's just my feelings.
I do believe the full board would be, and my comment that I was going to make just before you made that is that I don't, I got to depend on you to tell us when and if that should happen. And, you know, so that's where I'm looking to, is the experts. We can be proactive and do some things, but the opposite side of that is, when would we know, when would we know to remove it too? Because, so we'd depend on your expertise in that matter too. What I was going to say, Kathy, is if you feel the necessity to do something in our county buildings, then you should let us know. But in the meantime, we also have to understand that since this started, we have done an awful lot in our county facilities to help avoid the spread of COVID. You know, I mean, just for our employees and for our citizens to know, we have tried to make these public buildings safe. And if you determine from your professional standpoint that it isn't, then we need to know about it. But, you know, again, I think any discussion about any complete campus-wide deal, I believe we should have all five commissioners.
I mean, you certainly are welcome to make a motion at any point.
Sure, yeah, 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 yes.
Commissioner Campbell, if I may.
Yes.
Follow up.
Yep, Mr. Mojo.
We did spend a substantial amount of time discussing how to use CARES funds in a way to help mitigate infectious disease, not just COVID. And I felt that we really tried to find ways to make services for citizens available in person, over the phone, online, in person or not in person. And I know that I've seen the courts, maybe, Brian, have, I noticed the signs for masking is down now for courts. Is that required?
Currently, the courts are not requiring masking, but it's per county and dependent on if they're hitting up into the level of substantial or high. So some counties have been hitting that high level and they're requiring a mask.
And so I think that for the business that's done within our county buildings, I certainly feel as though we've taken all efforts to reduce contact and be mindful of where transmission could happen. I certainly see that there are spikes out there, and we've seen spikes before, and really would hope that we, as public health, could continue to educate folks or make available the opportunity to vaccinate if they so choose. You know, certainly there are citizens that don't wish to do so, and that's fine. We all have choices and we all have that choice. And it's for that that I would still support the availability for folks to choose if they wanted to mask in public or if they didn't want to.
I want to bring up, I mentioned that I do kind of follow nationally. And I saw a report nationally on the most recent 120,000 new cases. The information was that 95% of those new cases were not vaccinated. 95% of the 120,000 were not vaccinated. Almost 100% of the hospitalizations were people not vaccinated. I'm just sharing that it seems to me that there should become some common sense here. I'm obviously, I agree, it's one's choice to be vaccinated or not, but the numbers indicate that it's probably a good deal to do it. Commissioner Evinger.
You know, this is putting a sort of a difficult task on your shoulders. But I spent a lot of last week in the Twin Cities, visiting my father-in-law in a nursing home, and spent a lot, you know, long periods of time in a mask. You go to hospitals or a doctor's appointment, now you mask up. It occurs to me that the two things that are going to end this virus are the transmission of the virus, and God forbid we get other variants of it that are even more effective. And that happens through transmission and mutation. The transmission of it through contact and the infection you get within your body through your transmitting it. There's two ways we can deal with that, or three ways, actual social distancing, masking, and vaccine. And I don't like the thought of asking our employees or our citizens to have to wear masks and go through that again. But I also don't like the idea of COVID, especially this variant, affecting our workforce, affecting our citizens. And you look at this map, and it's getting awful red around here. And we're pretty close to that, and I agree with you, it's inevitable, it's going to happen. I don't want to, I was ready to second Commissioner Kaylee's motion on this, but I agree, we should have the full commission here to discuss this. But also, Kathy, we've imposed on you a lot in the last 16 months, and we'll impose again. If you and your staff have input on this, I think we're ready to hear it, at least next week. But I think this is something we need to move on. And I don't like doing this, I don't like wearing a mask. I sat in my car this morning and looked at my mask and came in with that, and that was bad on me. So I think this is at least a topic that's worth a discussion. And it's better that than to lose people like some of us right here have had happen. So I'd encourage you to tell us your thoughts whenever you're ready to.
Sure.
I know it's a difficult spot to put you in. You're also the professionals in this field, and I'm not. I don't want to shoot from the hip, I want to hear from you.
Sure.
And Mr. Chair, if I could maybe, I would just mention to the board, and as you're thinking about issues of whether or not, you know, countywide mask mandate, county facility mask mandate, those types of things, I mean, they're, you can look at, I would just ask, as you do, you know, for the next week, if you're thinking of those types of things and looking at some research, currently statewide mask mandates, there are 12 states that have them. The remaining states don't have a full mask mandate across the state. If you look at some of the research or some of the things that are happening, I mean, obviously, a mask mandate by a county can be controversial. And so there have been some constitutional challenges that have been happening in some of the states. So I just ask you to look at that. I mean, it's very likely impossible if the county was to do mask mandate. It garners the potential for court challenge. Whatever happens, whatever the board votes, that's what I'm going to defend. And so just have to be aware that that may potentially garner some litigation, depending on what happens. So I just point that out. I just note, it's, I've been looking at it, just knowing that this is a possibility coming up. But some states that did not have a mask mandate, and then counties implemented one and garnered a constitutional challenge, at least to the, well, in Florida, there were variable differences. One judge upheld it, one did not, and now it's up into their Supreme Court. Where Texas, where they challenged it, the Supreme Court shot down mask mandates by two separate counties. So that has happened already. So those are some things that are happening, but each state is going to be different potentially. So I just point that out, that I don't doubt that if, when the county chooses to, if they act on their own, it has the potential to garner potential litigation. So I'll just point that out.
Commissioner Evinger.
Speaking for myself, I think we're overreaching to talk about a countywide mandate. This would be our facilities.
Agreed.
I'm interested in discussing.
Well, we've, we've never done anything but that. I certainly, I certainly hope that those who haven't been vaccinated will, will follow guidelines and mask up.
Correct.
Without us having to suggest or tell them to.
Correct.
Let's see how it goes and again, what, anytime you feel it's important to be before this board with concerns and recommendations, we wanna hear about it. And I think that, I think I can speak for our entire board when it comes to that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we, we certainly can come back next week if the whole board will be here and have further discussion, if that's what.
All right. Well, why don't we, why don't we?
And Mr. Chair, I, I only wanted to point out, I, I think there was some discussion, but I just wanna make sure it's clear, there is a quorum here. So, I mean, the board could act in one way or the other. I mean, it's all about making a motion, having a second and a vote if, if you want to do that. You have a quorum to do that. I just wanna make sure that's clear. There's no requirement to wait, but you're free to wait, so. Okay. Just wanna make sure that was clear.
All right, so I think, I think just with where things are going, let's, let's keep you back on next week and we'll go from there in terms of if we wanna have an every-week deal again for a while. And thank you for bringing our epidemiologist along.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we're gonna take a brief break and we'll go through your budget. We are live. We will move into our annual budget presentation from Public Health. Kathy McGee. Kathy and Carmen. We're running a little bit late, but it was an important topic, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Any questions on our budget?
Okay, you're dismissed.
They're gonna be sick of me by the end of the day. Maybe you already are. I have with me Carmen. She is our Financial Director for Public Health. I don't know if some of you or any of you have met her, but she's instrumental in all of our work and works with the, the County Auditor Department as well. So she knows, she knows all the answers to the budget questions, so. Anything you have questions on. I'm not sure which, did you get this?
We do have that.
Sheet from Lori, okay.
We have, uh.
And then the longer one too as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
We do.
Okay. We didn't think you wanted to go through the 50,000 detail, so.
Well, not, not today.
Maybe at a later point in time.
We might want to by September 30th.
Okay. We'll be prepared for that, Carmen. Okay, so looking at this, Carmen prepared the sheet for our, our revenue sources. At the top, you can see where we put in the actual for 2019. 2020, 21, and 22 were just budgets. 2020, obviously, as you well know, is just a little bit tougher year for Public Health and all of our work, so we just added a budget item or a budget line there. But the 2019 actual is probably more accurate to compare to. And then at the bottom is our 2019 actual expenses and then 2021 and 22 budget. So you can see she has, just as a point of clarification here, on the county allocation, it's in a red square, so that is what our ask for 2021 was, the 1,290,066. And then she's got our ask for 2022, which would be the 1,408,588. So there's the difference of that 8.41 percentage. And then right underneath that, the Barnesville Ambulance always makes the request annually to this board and, and their request for 2022 was at 13,5. I'm not sure if they, if they've provided the information. They have to, Carmen, receive some of the information of, about their request. But that would be a county allocation. It happens to be in our budget for many years. Public Health provided some funding for that ambulance, but it's been a lot of years since we've had any direct funding for Public Health, so this is totally a, a county allocation. We just put that in because it's in our budget. So you can see the, from 2019, I would say that's probably the most accurate to look at compared to our 2022 budget. So you can see some of the differences and we have the change also on the side. She has changed from 21 to 22, so you can see the percentages of change. Not anything too significant. Our federal and state grants, some of them are very consistent, where we have annual federal and state grants, and then some of them are ones that we've just applied for and, and they may be for a year or two. So those can vary in what we receive with that. Our insurance revenue is listed because we have a lot of billable services in Public Health, so we bill insurance whenever possible, so we tap into that revenue source. License fees are the same. We do the license fees, of course, for our food pool and lodging, environmental health program. Client fees are typically really what we receive mostly from our detox. And so we, we have client fees, which would be fees that other counties provide when they send clients to our detox, so we can receive them from other counties and other entities. Our miscellaneous, Carmen, help me with that. What do we have under miscellaneous?
Those are the additional funds that we get that don't fall into either categories. So like donations, if we happen to get a memorial donation or anything like that would fall into that. So if they don't fall into any of the other sources, then that's where they fall. So it's pretty minimal.
Okay, and then county allocation and then I explained that. And then the ambulance. So the revenue sources for our 2022 budget is listed as 7,907,379 with all of those sources of revenue that are listed above. And then going down to the expenses, you see the payroll expenses, pretty minimal change, communication expenses, the subscription and dues, we have an increase in that. And Carmen has an explanation for, for the changes of where we allocated that. Maybe you have one. As she looks for that, we'll look at the marketing and advertising is, is, you know, depending on, you know, what we do for advertising, that changes just a little bit. Auditing amounts are there, as you can see, other professional fees. We have our medical consultant fee underneath that, but we also have professional fees that, like our, our software programs and things that we have to pay for, so that's under that. Did you find the subscription and dues? Okay.
The majority of that.
So I think Commissioner Campbell, if I may.
I'll let you ask it.
Well, I, I, so I just wanna clarify the ambulance piece. I just have a question on that.
Oh, sure.
In terms of, you know, it looks like an in and out, but was there a request from a certain department for the increase? Ambulance service?
Well, the ambulance, the Barnesville Ambulance Service typically makes the request to the board. We just have it in our budget because it's always been there, so we just put it as an in and out. The board still would have to approve that.
But that, it was from Barnesville Ambulance?
Correct.
I just wasn't sure.
Sorry, yes, Barnesville Ambulance.
Okay, my question is different about the ambulance.
Oh, okay.
So in 2021, we budgeted and paid $10,400 for the ambulance service.
Correct. Correct.
In 2022, they are requesting $13,500. Why on the top would we show that as revenue? We're paying it out, we're not paying it to ourselves. So why would that be shown on the top as a revenue line?
Well, we're just, we're just doing that in and out is all we're doing. So, yeah, we should take it off of the revenue.
Lori, can you, can you help me with that one?
Yeah, Lori, can you help?
That comes in as part of our inter-fund transfer, so they show it as a revenue. I actually have it on, in our, in our general fund, I have it as a new request.
I gotcha.
So I, I, I understand that the 13.5, in terms of the balancing of the budget, I'm still wondering why we're not paying it to.
Revenue for Public Health?
Yeah?
It's an expenditure from the general.
Okay.
Can I ask another?
Yeah, go ahead.
After several years on this board, I still don't understand why you have a different rep, like, budget sheet than every other department. It's really hard, and I get that it might make sense within your department, it's just really hard to follow consistently what the other departments have and what they're requesting. It's just my personal issue maybe.
This is kind of a, this is kind of a recap of.
I get it, but it's always a different list than the other departments give us.
Right, and that's a good question, Commissioner Mojo and, and Mr. Chair and the other Commissioners. This was changed a, a lot of years ago because of, of our Public Health budget and all of the various funding sources and our various program areas. So I would say it was even back two county administrators ago where we made some changes to simplify the, the summary, so it'd be easier to read. And so, yeah, it was made a long time ago.
Yeah, and, and it's probably Mary's baby, so maybe that's, she created it and so that's what makes sense, but it just is harder for me personally.
Yes, Commissioner Kaylee.
For your multi-year grants, are those reflected as revenue on the year they're received or is it spread out over the years for that grant period?
Yeah, go ahead, Carmen.
So in their multi-year, we normally have an amount for each year, so what you've seen our budget, whatever, that calendar years, because some of the grants even aren't even calendar years, so we have to adjust for that. So for a budget, it's just a calendar year. And some of them, we don't even, we don't get them till the end, so we're even guessing what, I shouldn't say guessing, but going on trending on what we're gonna have for next year.
They might be, they might be on a fiscal year versus our calendar year.
Yes, yes. We've got some that end in June, we've got some that end in quarter, some that don't even end in a quarter. So, you know, we're doing it as a calendar year budget, so that's how we do them. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Is that, you have more? I, I do have a couple of questions on the, your payroll line item, it seems quite a bit higher than most. I just wanna, I, I wanna ask a couple of questions. I noticed in our 2020 budget was 5.5 million, 2021 that rose to 6,63,000. I would imagine that was due to all the activities that, that came about. I, I think a reminder needs to be in place that, that there were reimbursements that were made to some of those extra payroll costs through CARES, right? Lori, am I correct in that? And then I see now we're in 2022, that number is even going up another 600,000 over 2021. And is that, is that in anticipation of additional staffing or what, what is it?
Yes, and we, we are meeting with PIC after this meeting, so we'll be talking about some of those positions that weren't filled and that we had been prior approved and requesting to be filled in some additional positions as well, so we'll need to get approval for those.
Because we're, you know, we're probably, we're looking at 1.1 million over two years ago.
And some of the expenses, you're right about the, the CARES fund. Other expenses we had were overtime expenses and, you know, we're waiting on FEMA, obviously, for reimbursement. That may take quite a while, so those would be reflected as well. There was a fair number of overtime expenses.
In, in the, in the 2022 revenue line items, are we incorporating any, and I'm looking back at Lori to maybe help here too, whoever can, are we incorporating some of the reimbursement dollars that through CARES went back? That we, that we, okay, that's not it. So tho, those are still sitting in reserves someplace?
Well, for 2022, we wouldn't be working with any care.
Yeah, but, okay, but the, but the extra dollars that county CARES dollars went to for 2020, 2020 and 2021, those dollars are still, they were, they've been reimbursed and they're still in a fund somewhere?
They're in their fund balance.
In their fund balance, okay. Okay.
I think we're getting, this is just listening to you guys, I think we're getting actual construed with budget. We're talking budget, so when you're talking actual, these numbers for 20 and 21 aren't actual. So what you're saying is correct, the, the money that came in for CARES to cover our COVID costs in our actual budget are there. But when we looked at budget, especially when we did the 2020 budget, none of that was even known at that time.
Nobody knew that.
Yep, so just, just to keep their separate, so when you're looking at the, these are actual budget numbers. So when we looked in 2021 budget, we did have a small amount of COVID expenses in there. And at the time, we did not know that we would ha, whether we would have revenue or not, so that revenue was not there. Now, when we're going into 2022, we do. So some, what we can cover in revenue based on the funding that we've got through Partnership for Health and directly through Public Health, our COVID expenses are 100% covered in here. So even though this, we may have payroll expenses, we've got a lineup top in federal or state that's covering that, so they're, they're a net zero on the bottom line.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Chair. Thanks for the presentation on the budget. It certainly, you've earned every penny this year in terms of what you've done. This is more for Steve, you know, and the, the last page of their proposed budget, they have the 2022 proposed at 1.4, 1,408,588, but the, their new request is only 91,000. And I understand that a lot of them are, are, are grants, but I, this goes to every budget we've seen where there's a much smaller new request, but really the, the addition is significantly higher. I just, I want you and Lori to be very, I mean, scrutinize that a little bit, just because it, it's not just a given that all of these budgets will grow by that much if we only have a new request of 91,000.
And we, we don't have reflected in there, you know, the detox. I think Rhonda had presented in her budget presentation, her ask was 662, 662,000 for our detox request through social service.
Yeah, that's on the last page. Thank you for that as well.
Okay.
All right.
Want me to go through the other expense details? Maybe what the, you know, what we're seeing as higher percentage changes?
Yeah, I think you can maybe just highlight the significant percentage increases.
So I think we talked about the other professional fees, the travel expenses. We included training in that line item as well, correct? So the training and travel were both included in that category? Do we have anything else on that training and travel?
So the biggest change, when you're looking at these big changes, is coming off of, we got some grants that come to an end and we picked up two that have a lot of other professional services and training and travel involved with them. And so that's why there's an increase, because you're, you're getting a higher bump. But again, there are a couple, the, the two grants I'm talking about come to zero, so their revenue on the top and bottom, so you're gonna see the big change on the bottom, but they're covered expenses through grant funding.
The client care expenses, as you see, the, the change in that, we, you know, that's mostly with our detox program is our client care services, so that is included at 4,000 in our 2022 budget, just because of the number of things that we provide for the client in, in regards to their needs. That must also include our, does that include our MEA plan? For the, for the detox, okay. Yeah, so that, you know, the, the MEA plan that we pay for, that, you know, the food delivery, et cetera. Supplies and equipment, and that Carmen can talk a little bit about for supplies and equipment, what we've put in that category?
The biggest change that we have there are, we're working with Lori to essentially save money in our fours, like the FEP truck, we don't have anything, so if that was to go down and we need to replace it, we don't have anything to go, we have for environmental health, so we're working with Lori to increase that. So that's where 5,800 of it is coming from. But again, the, one of our grants, it's 64,000 of the difference there is through one of those grants, that they're gonna have materials and supplies through that will carry through and be covered in funding.
And then the grants and, and subsidies at the bottom is expenses have decreased based on the reduction that Carmen talked about with the grants, so. So our total then is 7,907, so we, we balanced it out, obviously, in this category with, with the county allocation that we requested. Any specific questions that may be, and any of those line items that maybe are not understandable?
I think Kathy, as we move forward, we're getting all these presentations and there might be more questions, and I'll probably, I'll probably have some more based on the more detailed line items of your budget later. For first glance, thank you for the presentation. Do we have any other questions for? All right, thank you. Are, are you?
Yeah, I was just gonna note the second page maybe gives, especially for some of the newer commissioners, just a little bit of a breakdown based on program areas, so that might help you to understand our program areas and the breakdowns in some of those areas, that, that might be a little helpful as well. If you have, yeah, if you certainly have questions, we're happy to entertain any of those. Okay?
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, good morning. Request to move forward with the Family Service Center Security Project with Delta Construction and Network Technologies. We have Joe and Mark. Good morning, Mark.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
We, I have Mark here with me because he's been kind of a big help for this whole project. He's helped me a lot on this. So we have a camera portion of this project and we have a physical construction portion of this project. So he's handling the cameras and I've been working on the construction piece of it. So that map that I had put in your packet, basically the goal is to secure the lobbies like we talked about, the, every mini lobby and then add cameras to it as well, so. Pricing of it all is, I got two quotes right now for the construction piece of it. TF Powers is, came in 29,883 and Delta Construction came in at 26,375. So my, my recommendation is go, move forward with TF Powers on that one, and then, do you wanna talk a little bit on the camera piece, Mark, or?
Sure, certainly. Part of the plan is to include more camera coverage of the public areas in the building. We're gonna add 13 additional cameras to the 11 that are already there now. We use Network Center to provide our camera equipment. They are our sole source provider for that because it ties into our existing systems that we have already in place. We have more than 160 cameras throughout our buildings at present, and we felt that these cameras will help us see better what's going on inside that facility.
And, oh, sorry.
I just wanna clarify, you said T, go with TF Power, but that's the...
Oh, my fault, yeah, I, thank you for the correction, Commissioner Mojo. I'd like to go with Delta Construction, the lower.
Little bit.
Yeah, a little bit, yep.
Mark, in terms of the cameras, do they, do we, are they constantly recording?
Yes.
And how is our, how is our storage ability?
We, we store seven days on all of our cameras and we, we're good. We, we've just recently made some major upgrades in that system, but we should be in good shape. We're anticipating more cameras, you know, with more buildings, so we're, we're good.
And so is there a process then, if something were to happen where you're notified then, and a certain segment can be stored for longer? Is that, there's a process for that?
Yeah, there's, there's many people that can actually do that. Law enforcement has access to the cameras already, so does court security. Joe, myself, we can pull, pull the video, some sort of incident happens, pull the video, save it.
So if an event is reported that's unusual?
Right, then we, then we save the video out.
Okay.
We, we've actually used it quite a bit at the Family Service Center for thefts and everything else, so it's been very helpful on that end.
Okay. And the capital improvement bonding would, would cover the 25,000?
Yep, cover 25,000, and then we have plenty in Fund 19 to cover the remainder of it, so.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What is the balance of Fund 19?
Currently, right now, we're at 247,000 roughly in there. So that's after we replenish it from, I believe we spent 128,000 on that probation fit up. So that's, once the bond is, went through, that's been allocated back into Fund 19. So after that, it would be 247,000.
And we, what do we, what's the line item that goes into that fund on an annual basis?
100,000.
100,000, yeah. All right, well, we have a request before us. What's the board's wishes?
I move we approve. The request is outlined.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Ebbinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. That was approval for the Delta Construction bid and also the Network Center.
Mr. Chair, Joe, maybe you wanna give an update on the security?
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, the, yes, so the guard has officially been done. They, we, we talked about putting a 30-day notice in, they needed him somewhere else, so they were okay with letting that go. So as of Friday, he was done at noon, so we've been kinda watching the front and seeing the impacts and everything, and it's been going well so far, so.
All right, thank you. Lori and Darren, we have a request for approval to purchase multi-bro core payroll and HR software.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lori.
I'm looking for permission to sign a contract with UKG for a new payroll system. We purchased our old payroll system back in 2006 for about 86,000. And this new contract, the implementation cost is 47,250. Our maintenance fees, or annual maintenance fees are gonna go up substantially, but currently it's about 40,000, and it'll go up to about 90,000 possibly, but as more people, as more counties sign contracts, that cost will go down, so.
So when I look at this on, on page two, Lori, of this, it, so the 47 is the initial upfront cost?
Right.
And according to this, it said 16,200 quarterly?
Yeah.
That would be like 64,000.
Right, it's a little different. MCCC has signed a overall contract with UKG, and what we're gonna do, what's called blended pricing. And so the first, first 1,500 go at like a 13,75 rate, and the next 2,500 employees go at an $8 rate. So rather than charging the first counties that sign on that high rate, and then the next counties that sign on a lower rate, we're blending it all, so that everybody will be paying the same rate based on the total number of MCCC counties that have signed contracts. And so they chart, this charges at the low $8 rate, because we were already over that 1,500 limit that they provided, but it will actually be higher than that. But the maximum it would be, would be 91,825, because that's what they have currently signed, and I fully anticipate that to be probably about 20,000 lower than that on an annual basis. And I actually do have money for that in the Internal Service Fund. I've got money for the implementation as well as the difference in fees for two years.
Okay, so that won't, that won't, it wouldn't be a levy item for...
Not for two years.
For two years.
Right.
And we did have, we were paying, we were having a levy item for the annual maintenance.
We currently have about 40,000 in our, in our levy for payroll, so that would increase by about the $50,000.
In two years.
And, yeah.
But are we gonna keep the 40,000 in there now?
Yeah.
And you have that in your 2022 budget?
Yes. And then also with this new payroll system, there are some additional features that we were looking to buy different software for regarding open enrollment for one, and it does include our HR. Maybe Darren can talk to the open enrollment piece that we were looking at purchasing anyway in the future.
Yeah, okay, Darren?
Yeah, that, this has always been one thing that's been really, that we've wanted, is to have an open enrollment. You know, right now, we print off 450 packets and every, and hand them out, and then people come up and hand them back, and this would be a completely online system. It would reduce a lot of work and, and time for our HR department. And I've been looking at wanting to do this for a very long time, but it's, it was kind of expensive and they had different systems and it didn't all mesh with what we had. And so fortunately, with this system that we're looking at, it's already integrated into the system that we buy for the open enrollment. Like Lori said, there were some, some other modules that we could have gotten as far as training and evaluations and all this, but I think we have those systems already in place, and I don't think it's worth the amount of money that they wanted to charge for us for those other modules, those add-ons. If we look later on and we think that that module would be beneficial, we can always add it later, but I think the basic plan gives us enough to do our HR payroll system as well, so. Myself and Anna sat in on six of the demos for the others, was it six, I think?
There was like five. There, there was an extensive, extensive RFP process through MCCC, and we sat in on those presentations and that made evaluations of those, and, and UKG came out on top. And luckily, they happened to have a lower price point, too.
If this is approved, Lori, what would your implementation timeline be for?
We're, we're looking at May or April. So once we get this contract signed, then they can get us into their system, but we're hoping to do May or April, because I wanna get this completed before the election season starts for us.
And we, we also didn't wanna do it in the middle of open enrollment. With that coming up, that would be a disaster, because we, we are going to have to double enter, double enter everything for...
Two pay, two payrolls.
So that's double the work of what we will have to do, and we certainly didn't wanna do that during open enrollment at the end of the year. So, so April, May works very good for us because we'll have all of that done, and usually April, May is, is our slower time that we can implement this.
And maybe, Lori, you could just touch base or remind the board, you're not moving to this new payroll system because you're choosing to.
Yeah, correct. So what happened is our current payroll system got bought out by actually the parent company of UKG, but they are allowing us to continue to use it, but they are not upgrading it, and they're not letting any other counties come on, and we'll be phasing that product out in the future. You know, it's not a cutoff, like you, you gotta move like right now, but probably within a year, year and a half, they're gonna force everybody to switch to something else.
Lori, how long would you anticipate you'd run parallel payroll systems?
Just for two payrolls?
Two payroll.
Yep.
All right.
I would make a motion to support this.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebbinger to approve the payroll and HR software upgrade. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried, all right.
I have a question for Lori.
Oh, okay.
Lori, I, I know that when we moved to the Government Center, we talked a little bit about polling sites and making sure that we had every T crossed, ensuring, ensuring that we did what we needed to do to inform the public and make sure everything was on, on course. Are we good in that aspect?
We are right now, but we're in the middle, we'll be starting redistricting now.
Right.
Now that we got our census data. And so as a process of that, we'll be working, especially with the city of Morehead, to establish their polling sites. And so some of those will be changing, and we will be notifying the whole county
Okay.
Of, of their polling sites for the elections coming.
Good, I just wanted to make sure that, I know you're on top of it, but that, that we're also aware of what's going on, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into our committee reports. It started to my left last week, so Commissioner Mojo, would you like to start?
Thank you. Yesterday, I attended a, our ARPA Cares Act Committee meeting. We had a presentation from the Afro-American Development Organization as well as the Kurdish American Organization in terms of a request for increased communication in terms of vaccine delivery, translation services, and information. I think we did make some pretty good headway in terms of the availability for public health to have vaccine clinics within their communities. I think that is important, so they will continue the dialogue offline. We did talk a little bit more about communication from the federal level in terms of what's appropriate in terms of funding, but also talked about how the, the upswing in cases may change in terms of what we're spending money on if public health is needing more money for that delivery as well. After that, I attended a meeting with members of the SWAC Committee and the city of Morehead for, on the Resource Recovery Joint Facility. Had a long discussion on the 15th Avenue North Water Main break that we encountered and in terms of what our contractor and MPS can communicate in terms of who's liable for that fix now that it's done, and talked about the agreement for, as we move forward, as the owners and Morehead moves forward, as the operators, what initial, or additional financial commitments will have to come forth. So I, I think that the message coming out of that is we're still strongly committed to a joint facility between the city of Morehead and Clay County, and look forward to the completion of construction on that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebbinger.
Met this morning with Mr. Kaylee, and I met with Rory Bell and Jason McCoy from Public Health. I just wanted to update us on a couple of developments. State has a positive community norms grant, which focuses on positive actions on the part of youth, not the negatives, which Jason has gotten. It's a five-year grant. It'll address alcohol, tobacco, marijuana use. It'll be out of the DGF school system. There's an additional federal grant that they're very hopeful they're gonna be able to get, which will include the city of Morehead, Morehead schools. This will result in another full-time position in the five-year grant funding. We also discussed the tobacco ordinances that are currently being considered specifically. We discussed Morehead. They're gonna have a vote on the 29th, and it'll involve the various options that are out there, one of which is similar to what Dilworth passed that basically addresses vaping. Then there's other options that are out there that are more comprehensive. That'll be Morehead's call on, on what their vote is, but in any... But in any event, given the option, even, even the least of these options involves shutting down the sale of vaping materials in the city of Morehead. Since we already have that in Dilworth, another community, there is a probable offset that these businesses will be looking for other locations within the county. And of course, that could be in unincorporated areas that are zoned for business in, in Clay County. And it's probably a discussion we're going to have to have on this commission at some point on whether we want to have our own countywide ordinance involving control of any of these products to include vaping or flavored tobacco products. And I think we've all collectively agreed that these are decisions be made by municipalities at their level. Once those decisions are made, there may be an offset where these products are relegated to the unincorporated areas of the county unless we come up with an ordinance. So again, that's a discussion we'll probably want to have. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Kaylee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 12th last week, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation Meeting. There were a few approval items on that agenda. One was for a side water inlet. One of the things they noted on that project is the cost has gone up quite a bit because it needed to be a metal pipe. And then cost of steel is, just keeps going up. So that was a $20,885 project there. Then there was a request for payment on a grade stabilization, contract for a water and sediment control basin project, and good reports from all of the various groups associated with that. Just a reminder that we do have that tour coming up on September 9th. The Clay Soil and Water Conservation District Fall Bus Tour. We'll meet at Junkyard Brewery and then go tour some of their project sites, and then wind up back at Junkyard where there will be a pint night. And they will be selling a local brew made with local honey, and a dollar for each pint will go to conservation projects, so. And then this morning, I also attended that substance abuse meeting, which Commissioner Evinger just covered. That concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. On August 10th, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We discussed a little bit about the, there's some issues with the Georgetown Bridge that goes to North Dakota. There's some work with Cass County going on on that. No decision has been made, I don't believe, on this, but I think the idea was that it's more of an approach issue on the North Dakota side that, that should be repairable. We talked a little bit about the North Broadway Bridge and the update there. And we went through the questionnaire that the city of Fargo is sending out to areas that they feel they want community feedback on. We looked at that questionnaire, and we modified it to the needs of Clay County and which issues were important in Clay County. And we, we talked about, we have a fairly expanded area that we're going to send that questionnaire out looking for feedback on. Went a little bit further. Obviously, we're going to go all the way up to Cragness and everything north, everything along Wall Street. And we decided to include the areas south of Wall Street, which is the Crystal Creek areas, because we don't, we thought maybe they might have some, some daily traffic, some of them from that area. So, so they're all going to get that questionnaire coming in the near future. We talked about the process for change orders in the future and how we'll, how we'll handle those, and there'll be more to come on that. We talked more about the county-state highway numbers, radar speed signs that, and I think we're certainly recommending that, our Highway Tracking Committee is going to recommend that we purchase those. And Dave did find out that even if we purchase those in advance of the construction project, that it would still be eligible for reimbursement. You know, when we do go with that project, we might delay that project in our five-year plan to go along with, with Morehead's plan for the, they're doing a road raise on the northern end of that for flood control work. So we may modify our timeline for that project to coincide with Morehead to hopefully get better, better rates on that project. But we certainly, I certainly encouraged, and I think it's going to come before our board, to purchase those signs, and we'd be looking at two of them, one coming from the north as well as one from the south. And as you know, we've, we've had an awful lot of communication from residents concerned about traffic speeds there, and MnDOT has declined any requests to change the speed limit. So at least we can do is put these, these signs up to bring awareness to the, those driving of the speeds that they are driving. So hopefully, that will help ease their concerns somewhat until something happens in the future with speed limits. We talked more about the Glendon Turn Lane. There's a condemnation process that's going to have to move forward with that. I don't know, Brian, are you involved with that at all with, okay. And then we just got construction updates on county-state highway 6, 8, and 33. The paving should be complete and the final asphalt in 2022 on Casaw 3, Casaw 8, last, at our meeting was about done, so I'm assuming it is done now?
Yes, it's been striped and the signage has been taken down.
Okay. And the same with Casaw 6, that was supposed to have been done on the 10th. That same day, I had a diversion authority chairs meeting, and we continued to talk about P3 contracting, next steps. There's some issues with, in regards to acquisition of some BNSF property, rail, rail lines in southern Cass County. And some discussion about Houston Moore Group's task order issues. And then we were reviewing some of the North Dakota funding timing and uses of those funds that are coming from the state of North Dakota. On Thursday, the 12th of August, I attended the Lakes Country Service Cooperative Meeting. And again, I, I got a brochure here, and Steve, I'll give it to you, on cooperative purchasing. There's an, that's really doing well through the cooperative, and it's expanded into North Dakota and South Dakota, and our, and that cooperative is, you know, making, getting some good revenue as a result of that. That's beneficial to our counties. Rate increases, they're not officially up, but they'll be coming out soon. So I, until they publicize it, I, I'm not at liberty to say what, what that might be. And then on the 16th, Commissioner Mojo did report on the American Rescue Plan or CARES 2 Committee Meeting, and I don't really have anything else to add to that. I do, and then we did meet yesterday afternoon with the city regarding some equipment that we, we believe it was the city's in their operations, it should be theirs to purchase. And, and of course, right now, there was, apparently there was some miscommunication with the city, and so in their 2022 planning, they did, they did not plan and prepare for those pieces of equipment. And I think we're, you know, from a dollar standpoint, we're looking somewhere in the budget process, we had removed 500,000 in terms of dollars. So, and in, you know, my response to them was that, that we weren't going to probably need to invest in that equipment till potentially 2023. Because as we know right now, the, the turnkey date to us is, I believe it's October 22nd was the most recent timeline for us to have that building turned over to us. And just with my past experiences on these, I'm assuming that that will just be moved back a little bit. We'll try our best to keep, we always try to keep our projects on time and on budget, but some things are just out of our control when it comes to the timing. So what, what we talked about was I, from, from our county standpoint, we still felt it was extremely important that the equipment that's used by Morehead for their operations should be their responsibility. And what, what we talked about is, is moving forward, that's, we still need to determine what, for example, the three pieces of equipment that they have. One of them, they, they say they might have to buy it right away because they have a loader, a front-end loader. So they, they might have to have to buy that right away. So that could reduce that number, but the other items they would still need, and we need to make sure that those items are in place the day that's open. And so what we suggested to the city would be that we will make the original, the investment with the idea of them reimbursing us in 2023 or 20, you know, over, over a one-to-three-year timeline. Chuck Hendrickson was there on behalf of the council, and, and he's, he felt that was reasonable, and I, and I, you know, he's going to, they're going to be bringing that forward to their council for, for action. You know, if they're, if we're, if we're going to call this a collaborative effort, they, the city also does need to be a partner in this, and, and, and they, and Dan Molly was their, their city administrator, and they, they certainly agreed, and, and they're going to try to work on that. And I, we're going to be able to resolve it, I think, in terms of that. The issues, the other issues regarding 15th Avenue and, and there's some potential cost increases in the amount of 85, up to $85,000 regarding a broken water line. And then also having to extend the 12-inch water main, an additional 270 feet that wasn't anticipated, that had added to those costs. And, and we asked the city if, you know, because it was, certainly it was based on, on previous mapping, and, and we didn't, we didn't really get any results there with the city, other than Tom Trowbridge was there, and he did say that where the line was broken, there was a temporary, almost a 400-foot temporary water line put in that went to the park. And that was apparently a decision by, through general construction engineers and, or the underground folks that were working on that project. And Tom said the easiest thing would have been just to fix the break right away as opposed to having to do that temporary line. And so it was not the city who chose the temporary line rather than just fixing it. And they're, you know, we might have been looking at something that was 12 to 20,000, and they said that, that, that fix might have been 1,500 to 2,000. So we're going to, we're going to still have dialogues with construction engineers and their underground and see where that's going to go. I'm kind of getting into the weeds a little bit on it, but I thought it's important for you guys to, the rest of the board to know what was going on there. That concludes my report. Steve?
I think, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, participated in Highway Tracking, that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell. On the 11th, we had management, county management, we discussed budgets, COVID updates, upcoming picnic. On the 11th, I met with Shelley Jeffers and Renell Fennell from Court Administration on a series of shared issues with the county. On the 11th, they also met with Kathy on the budget that you heard this morning. On the 12th, I met with James O'Donnell on the budget for the juvenile center that you heard today. On the 12th, that afternoon, I participated in the MCC JPA pre-agenda meeting. We discussed a number of property offers, counteroffers that may be coming to the board here in, in the coming week. And we also talked about, as the process of acquiring properties, flow adjustments, increases, there may be a need to have additional meetings each month, each week, each month. On the 13th, participated in the ARPA meeting, that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo, and also the Resource Recovery. I did reach out to construction engineers on the feedback that we received from, from Morehead and just to notify them. And Ben Madison's currently on vacation, so I expect we'll hear something back from them. And then just to touch base, there is a vaccine clinic on Thursday at the Family Service Center from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and they will have both Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And that concludes my report.
All right, Brian, anything? Kaylee, anything else? All right, with that, we are adjourned.